Everybody, everybody ready? Okay. Where to leap off, Charles? I was looking for the page where I left off and I did not circle it last.
All right. We have in Chapter 28 on Economic Development Corridor. You have it as Page 10. You were all the way down to the retail wholesale sales. Starting off with adult businesses, obviously, you simply relegate that to the chapter that deals with adult businesses.
Left off 11-8.
And let staff and the attorneys work out the details of that one. But beyond that, that's where you left off. Would like to make one point that has been raised since your last meeting. Want it to be clearly understood that when this new code is created and forwarded by you to the planning, to the City Council, and ultimately the City Council approves it, or some version of it, once it is in effect, it does not mean that every structure and every use in this community needs to automatically upgrade and change to what's in this code. Things that, uses that were legally established under previous codes, or structures that were built in conformance with the previous code are allowed to remain just as they are. They can become existing, nonconforming. There are some minor limitations to them that you, that affect very few of those structures, but there's no mandate that those structures or those uses be modified to come up to the current code. If they choose to expand their act, expand their structures, modify their uses, then those modifications and those expansions would be subject to the new code. But existing uses and structures, it does not affect them. With that, I'll remind you and the vast audience here, we appreciate your participation, that you're looking at the new development code. You're going chapter by chapter. You're in the Economic Development Corridor chapter now, and your procedure in the past has been that you look at page by page and you ask if there's any of the commissioners have questions or would like to make changes or comments to the material on those pages. A commissioner will raise an issue, you will debate it, give guidance to staff, and we move on from there.
Okay.
With that, again, you ended up on Page 10, Retail Wholesale Sales.
All right. Does anybody have a burning urge to add adult bookstores anywhere?
I think we have two already.
This is only for the EDC, correct?
This is the EDC.
This is the EDC chapter, and so this indicates that it's prohibited in all of those zones.
But I'm assuming, because we came across with the tattoo parlor, so the, I'm assuming that there is somewhere in the city it's allowed because we can't prohibit it?
Currently it is. Correct. Currently it is allowed in a specific zone, maybe even two, and with the new Chapter 9, 112, there will be provisions that it be allowed in a specific area, or specific areas as well.
Okay.
Have to allow them more than one location.
Yeah, I just didn't want the city to...
No, we will.
Okay.
That's why I suggest that the staff and the City Attorney's Office will make sure that there's appropriate language there for the commission and council to adopt to cover our bases as well as possible.
Thank you.
All right. Are there any corrections requested, discussion in the retail wholesale area?
I had a question as far as the antique shop. Why it would be permitted everywhere except in the North Gate? And it's a conditional use permit there? What's the reasoning for that?
The North Gate, because it was anticipated to be more of a business, research, development, industrial kind as opposed to a retail. And this would, for the kind of return that comes to the city for that activity, probably be a better location than a more retail commercial spot.
Okay.
It would be permitted, but you'd have to consider that location first.
Good explanation. Thank you.
Okay. Any others in the retail wholesale?
I just, an auction facility? The Community Core?
Where are you, whoa, where are you at?
Yeah.
She's in the next one.
Oh, use, okay.
I had a question about the adult bookstore. There's one in the core area.
In the, well, in the EDC. This is for EDC only.
Okay.
So...
And if there is one that's in an area that will be in the EDC, if it was legally established, I would have to assume that would have been legally established or moved out of there, it would become existing, nonconforming.
Okay.
And just to let you know, the final product of this will have the charts read a little bit better so you don't have random spots where use and titles and so forth show up in the middle of tables. Yeah. It, once we get to the point where we've eliminated what we eliminate and so forth so that I know what the top of the page is, then we can make that work.
Commissioner Sobek, you were asking about auction facilities?
Yeah. In the Community Core, this is more of the downtown area. I didn't know so much if a auction facility would be appropriate, even with the, you know, indoor, outdoor there in the EDC area, of the downtown here area.
I would generally agree, because the first thing that comes to mind is the Richie Brothers Auction where they have all the equipment stored outside all day long.
Yeah, stored outside, yeah.
Probably not what we want in the middle of our downtown area, I don't think.
I understand that, yeah.
You have correspondents that actually asked for in your material.
In the northern area?
I don't remember exactly where it was.
It was right here. It's in our book.
Should be the Southern Gateway.
But it's certainly not in the Community Core.
This is Newport.
I mean, in the southern area, the, is this why this was in here for us to, to discuss?
Right. Any of the, any of the correspond, you've got basically two groups of correspondence in your material today, in your blue folders. One deals with the workshop, which is addressing land uses and so forth, such as the rendering facility, and the one dealing with the auto dealership. And I don't remember if that is in a location that would, or would not be in the EDC.
This was the southern location off of...
What's the gist of the letter? I have not had an opportunity to review it.
They want, they want auto auction to be a permitted use, or a conditionally permitted use in...
Off of Keller in the EDC, right as you drive into the city from the southern location.
Most southern part of the...
Most southern, right next to Keller and the freeway.
Right now, it's all five acre, right off the dirt road, and there's ranches, and there's also some corporate yards in there.
I actually haven't looked at some, I actually was asking my husband, because he drives a lot, if he's, how these places look. He says most of them are look like a bunch of cars piled in an area. He said there's one in Fontana he's seen.
Yes.
That's a little bit nicer, but it's a mile wide, look block-like, like there are a lot of cars in there. So I...
I'm trying to say this tactfully so we don't insult Fontana, which is hard to do.
I have not seen any.
Be nice.
I'm trying.
That's why I was being nice.
I spent 10 years in Fontana.
Fontucky?
I'm trying harder. And we had a number of issues with that auction house. Primarily because of the parking and the lining of trucks in the, the carriage trucks in the public right-of-way, lack of improvements to the site, and overcrow, bad traffic flow when they did have their auctions. Under a conditional use permit, obviously, you could monitor, you could condition those things so that you'd have appropriate road improvements, so that you prohibit storage out in the public right-of-way, and so that you'd have adequate parking for the most intensive of auction days. But it is up to the commission. If you don't feel that vehicle auctions are an acceptable use within the EDC areas, you can do that. Or if it's individual EDC areas, you can spell those out as well.
So I would assume, to help with the conversation, to clear my mind, is that why, instead of it being permitted, it's a conditional use permit, and it could be, all the conditions would be satisfied through that?
Correct. You could apply conditions to it that would limit the number of auctions, the day of the week the auction would take place, again, no parking in public right-of-way.
How, how does this affect when they have auto sales on the college parking lot? Would that, is that different?
That is totally different.
Okay.
That's a parking lot sale, and it's handled in a different chapter entirely.
Okay, so it's indoor and outdoor?
Are those, is that auction, like the one in Fontana, considered an indoor or outdoor? Because they run them through, I've been to it, bought a car from there. They run them through an indoor facility, but 99% of the, you know, the cars are outside. Is that considered an outdoor and indoor auction, the Fontana one?
That's an outdoor auction.
That is an outdoor auction, okay.
And along the freeway, that, Matt, you mentioned...
Richie Brothers.
Richie Brothers, that's an outdoor.
I think they conduct the auction indoors, but they store miles of equipment outdoors.
Question, is that the use we want for that limited space?
Right.
Right. I mean, Richie Brothers, Lisa might know better than me, but Richie Brothers was, for the longest time, the highest generator of sales tax revenue in Riverside County.
Yeah, they do generate a lot.
Yeah, look at what they're selling too.
In all the states that they're in.
Yeah.
Well, the economic issue is something that the commission, your concern would be whether or not you think that it would be beneficial or harmful to the community. And economics is a benefit, but also the potential for harm because of, you know, activities that could be associated with it. So it's a balancing act that you have to make, and it's a recommendation up to the City Council, and they get to make a decision.
I personally don't like it in the Community Core. I think that we can stick it anywhere else except there.
Can we actually, for my indication, define Community Core? Is that the part just south of the town center, and we're, but north of...
Number three on this map is Community Core.
Okay, so I was...
Yeah, because I would like to see it...
Is it possible to put a map on the screen?
Yeah, I wouldn't say we'd want one of those auctions in the Community Core.
But again, I want to make sure that you're not, that when you say you don't want an auction, you don't want a vehicle auction.
Vehicle auction.
But if you have an art auction, something, antique auction, things of that sort, so if your concern is vehicles, then we can put, we can specify vehicles.
Antiques, that's Old Town Temecula. That's, you got Old Town Temecula right there, so should we put some kind of delineator of, you know, auto auctions?
And I would suggest vehicle, not just auto.
Yeah, vehicle would be better.
And I'm not sure...
Because that takes into consideration construction.
I'm not sure if it would be good to have one right as you drive into the city from the south, the first thing you see, or even driving into the city from the north, the first thing you see. I'm not sure if, I, I mean, I just know, when I think of Keller, I think of a lot of rural residents who want the rural kind of area out there.
Place I could really see kind going along with that is the north, because you could, you could put it over by Marietta Road, go to the west over there, and that would be appropriate.
Okay.
So shall we only permit it in the outdoor in the North Gate? And the rest of it?
I would go with that.
So it's prohibited in everything except North Gate?
For the vehicle, not, not here how it's listed, auction facilities, we'd have to define vehicle.
Yeah, vehicle only permitted in North Gate.
I'm ambivalent. I mean, it, the direction that the Southern Gateway is going with Commerce Point, that's 800,000 square feet of industrial, you know, and seeing what's going to come in in the future with Keller Road off-ramp and whatnot, I mean, it's, I'm in agreement, the northern gateway makes the most sense.
They already have yards over there.
So vehicle.
So you want vehicle, outdoor, vehicle auctions are prohibited except in North Gate?
And is that going to be permitted, or with the conditional use permit?
Conditional use permit, I would think, right? That way you can control...
That would be my recommendation.
Hours of operation, things like that, sightliness.
So do we want to, auction facilities, do we want to clarify that at all? Indoor, outdoor, like you were saying, art auction? We don't need to, we don't need...
It would be a broad brush. You've separated from, from vehicles, which appears to be the concern, versus art, antiques.
Okay.
Okay. Moving on to, I'm on 11, it looks like, but we're into the bakeries and the rest of the retail wholesale. Any other comments there?
Why would it be a conditional use permit anywhere for a wholesale? Oh, I see, I could see in, what is that?
I was kind of the same. I questioned the rationale there myself, so I would ask the same question.
If it's wholesale, it could be a large factory that produces bread, or cupcakes or something, and you may have a lot of deliveries, and a lot of delivery trucks going from the facility and so forth. You may have a lot of traffic in and out, you may have hours of operation that, that would be inconsistent with surrounding properties and so forth. That was my thinking as far as the recommendation. It is up to the commission.
I could see that issue on Newport Road and McCall, but not in the North Gate. I mean, you actually kind of want something like that up in North Gate, don't you? Or no?
It's permitted.
No, it's not. Wholesale is conditional.
Oh.
That's what I'm saying, it should be permitted in the North Gate, and then the rest of it's fine. Well, we don't really want one of those in the South Gate, do we?
Or in McCall Boulevard either. I know what he's talking about, because I've been to those bakeries before.
You're, you're talking like the Wonder Bread Factory?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think the northern end of town is the only place that that would fit.
Yeah.
So, conditional use permit, and then prohibited everywhere place but North Gate?
I would say so on the wholesale side.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I could see just North Gate.
I'm just saying what I heard. I'm not recommending that to you.
Yeah, I would agree with you, yes.
Okay.
Northern gateway only.
So what are we doing?
We're prohibiting the wholesale everywhere except the northern gateway, and then it'll be permitted there.
It'll be conditional use permit.
Conditional use.
Right.
Bicycles are so dangerous.
Hardware stores, so this is going to be your Home Depots, your Lowe's, things like that, closed building with outdoor storage. Outdoor storage would be conditional across the board. Anybody have any problem with this? Looks, looks, looks fine to me.
Mm-hmm, looks fine to me.
Okay. We'll just run down the line. If anybody has anything, I'm not going to read off every single one as we go down, just speak out. Farmers markets, candy, candy confectionery, computers, drugstores, feedstores, and they are conditionally use permitted everywhere except the Community Core. Feedstore, what about in the McCall area? Is there a screaming need for a feedstore in the McCall area?
That's... Yeah, I don't think we need to put one there.
Yeah, that's why I was thinking the same thing, McCall, probably not so.
Yeah, I kind of agree with that too.
So change that to prohibited?
Yeah.
Or McCall Boulevard?
I had put down here to discuss with the commission on the feedstores, not having them adjacent to the freeway. I believe my logic at that time was thinking of what like a Dan's Feed and Seed looks like when they're, you got the hay piles all stacked up right there, and it's blown out in the freeway and all that stuff, it's a big mess.
And look at that assor that's up in Paris.
Paris, the dance?
Yeah.
Temecula, right at, right at Santiago Road.
Mm.
It was just a question. I'm ambivalent, I just, it was something that I considered, a feedstore along the freeway, because we had started separating things away from the freeway, and it was one thing that I, that I thought about, so if everybody's okay with it, I am too.
I understand your logic, but I think that the economics of it, with the cost of, it'll, it'll actually dictate, and with the conditional use permit, it'll kind of weed that kind of stuff out.
Yeah. Yep, okay. Florists, yeah, they're, they're pretty dangerous. Furniture, department stores, discount variety stores. I had asked to explain this use. Discount variety store, what are we talking about here?
99 cent store?
Fundamentally.
Yeah.
Dollar.
We already got one of those.
I have three.
Do they, are they generally high producers of sales tax revenue as we're trying to go for with the EDC?
That one there, the one that we have out there, what's that on Marietta? The old Alberson store?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, that thing is, it's like wall-to-wall people in there every day.
I just read an article, they're the one of the most profitable stores, profit margin stores in retail that exist right now.
Yeah.
Their profit margin, this is, this is about the city's economy.
But I'm saying, they do it by volume.
Yeah.
Okay.
Sales tax revenue.
Yeah.
I don't see why they need a conditional use permit, though.
It's a perception issue.
Yeah, they have alcohol in there.
Okay.
They serve that nasty wine.
No, some of them do. Some of them do. Others may not. And if they have alcohol sales, you can address the need for CUP if they sell alcohol.
Okay.
It's listed as conditional use permit because in most communities it is a condition use permit, because there's a perception of it being a lower-end store, and lower-end clientele that may visit that store, and, and issues of that sort.
I'd like to change...
That's, with Dollar General and the other stores that are coming up, they do rely upon higher volume, they are cleaner businesses, they usually have a much better business model. This depends on what you want in your core, in your economic development corridors, and staff doesn't have a strong recommendation as to keeping it a conditional use permit, with the exception of alcohol. And we can just put in the notes, alcohol sale requires CUP.
Yeah. I would like to change the word there, it says CUP required to serve alcohol, change that to sell alcohol. This is in the...
Yeah.
Make that, instead of serve, sell. We don't want anybody to get the wrong opinion that they can drink there.
Okay.
Unless you're Boston Darn.
Any other, any other concerns there? Drugstores, guns and ammo, guns and ammo are conditionally used permitted everywhere except for the McCall and Southern Gateway.
Why are they not permitted in McCall?
What's the, what's the logic there?
I'm trying to catch up.
Okay.
What's the line are we on, please?
Guns and ammo on McCall.
Guns and ammo on McCall. Simply the, the general residential character of the area, and concerned that, that that may be too intensive of an activity for that.
That was my thought as well, with the residential area there.
Right up the street from Santa Rosa Academy, and we don't need the national preoccupation visiting our city.
I think you...
Shooting up schools.
You mean, McCall would be Hans Christian Middle School? Is that what you mean? Santa Rosa's over here.
Yeah, Santa Rosa's right over here, yeah.
McCall.
Are you talking, are you presuming to eliminate it from the Community Core? Is that what you're saying, Earl?
Yes.
Okay.
Oh, okay. I can go with that.
So you want to change from conditional to prohibited?
Right.
Core, Community Core.
And why is it prohibited in the Southern Gateway?
I don't think we want to allow a, I could see a manufacturer, but a retail store, and we're going towards more professional medical whatever, down industrial down there.
Would this coincide with an indoor shooting range?
That would be an incidental activity to the indoor shooting.
It's incidental, okay. Gosh.
The only reason I say is because that would be excluding possibility of, say, a Turner's or a Bass Pro Shop or something, you know, coming in, in that area.
That's true. And you got shops at Scott that's in there, and those are small stores, you could have a gun, a gun shop there.
Are those, like the Turner's and the Big Fives and the people that sell the ammo, are you, is this, are we talking about like a primary use?
Correct.
Okay, so, so at a Turner's or like we have here, that's an ancillary use?
It would be incidental to the overall sales. It's doubtful that for a Bass Pro Shop or one of the others, that ammunition would be, guns and ammunition would be, would exceed 10% of their gross sales. Or 10% of their floor area.
That's your, that's your threshold, 10%?
For incidental, correct.
Okay.
So we still only see the need of prohibiting it in South Gate, or no?
Or should we have a conditional use?
Just make it conditional use.
Can we have a conditional use permit?
Yeah.
That's what I would suggest.
You want conditional for all five, or...
That's what I would prefer.
Yeah.
Yeah, McCall makes sense as well.
Well, I, I wouldn't want it in this, in the Community Core. I still have a problem. I don't mind elsewhere, but not there.
Well, what if, what in the Community Core, you're going to have some nice developments in there. Wait a minute, am I thinking this is Community Core, right?
Yes.
Yeah, you're going to have some nice shops in, that's, you're thinking you don't want, you don't want the senior core, right?
No, I don't mind the senior core. We got enough guns over there right now. I mean, that's not a problem.
Well, I don't see why you would want it in the Community Core.
I just, I just have this problem with it being close to a school.
Well, and then on McCall, there is a school there, and right off of, right off the McCall Boulevard, right there, you're surrounded by that middle school over there.
The hot ones?
Yeah, we have two schools. We have Santa Rosa here in the Community Core, and then we have, I agree, I don't, I agree both those areas have schools.
Do we have an ordinance that, like with alcohol sales, that it can't be within so many feet of a school? Do we have the same thing for guns and ammo?
Not that I'm aware of, no.
Okay.
Is it more of a perception issue? Because, you know, frankly, the guys, not to be, you know, rough here, but going to shoot up schools, it's not because the gun shop was close to the school. It's because they got the gun other places.
Right.
You're not going to stop it.
But is it a perception issue that you don't just want it?
Correct.
For me, it's a perception.
Look at the big picture.
Right.
Looking at the big picture.
That's fine.
Okay.
Well, I just, you know, I just have an aversion to any kind of area where it would be a target of opportunity for a disgruntled employee.
Sure.
Such as a kid who got a DM his physical health test.
Well, I don't think he's going to run over, and they're just going to give him a, you know, Colt 45.
Okay, so we're talking, we're talking about...
Well, they said that about that school.
But you know, if, if saved, it was by a school.
But we're okay, I'm okay prohibiting it, that's fine.
Okay, so, so we're going to prohibit in the Community Core and the, and the McCall area?
Yeah.
Because of the schools adjacent.
Yes, I think that'd be wise choice.
Can we jump back up to grocery store?
Yeah, you want to jump back, go ahead.
My question was, right now, we're prohibited, we're conditionally using a grocery store on the North Gate, when what that is, is across the street you have Winco. And what Parrish did is they went down there, cut out each of those corners, and got all that lovely tax revenue from all those stores. You've got a Home Depot, you've got a Winco, and, and they didn't want the responsibility of any of the property to the immediate west or anything of it. So I'm thinking we should allow a Food for Last or some other large retailer to develop right there and grab some of that tax revenue. So I wouldn't want a conditional use permit, I would want to encourage something like that, a mere type of development across the street from it.
North Gate?
Isn't that type of use generally a conditional use permit anyway?
Yes.
Yeah?
But we have it permitted in all the other four areas except for the one. I would agree.
He's right, because...
I would agree with Commissioner Thomas.
Same here, because of...
So switch it to permitted.
Right.
Love to take a lot of that revenue away.
Okay. All right. I had, on household appliance stores, I had also proposed to permit that in the northern gateway.
That's your big box store you're thinking?
Yeah. Well, that's a household appliance store, that would be like, like your Sears.
Right, the small Sears shops and, and places that are...
Your outlet center, your Sears outlet, or something like that.
Right.
That's going to be a big battle.
Why?
Because, see, you have Home Depot that also sells household appliances, and they will...
American way, spirit of competition.
Competition, that's why you see a Lowe's and a Home Depot cross street from each other all the time.
Yeah.
It's corporate policy.
Every, does everybody agree, permitted in the Northern Gateway?
I think it should be.
I'd like to see it permitted.
Permitted.
Okay. All right, um. Going down the line, um, anything there, indoor multi-tenant?
Yeah, I have a question on that one, um, on the indi- indoor multi-tenant retail shopping, is that like an indoor swap meet? Where they take, like, a big store that's gone out of business and they divide it up into sections, there's one in Paris.
Granny's attic type thing?
Yeah.
But most of them do not turn out to be.
Okay. I already read that over there.
I don't know, when you do, you look at, uh, the main areas down there at Temecula, you know, they've got all these, oops, they've got all these shops.
We wanna hear you.
Oh, okay, yeah, they have all these shops in the main building there, that are, you know, high-end shops, middle-end shops, um, they have a food court. And that's what my thinking was when I looked at this, sort of like an indoor mall type thing.
Well, can you explain what, maybe more of this?
Well, there are a variety, this particular thing came from my experience down in, uh, Palm Springs, where they have several, um, collections of, of units that are together in their, um, their courtyards basically are roofed over and so forth. And you have a collection of small, um, couple thousand square foot, um, uh, retail suites, uh, all selling there, mostly jewelry and art and things of that sort. Here, I specifically thought that was an acceptable activity, but you'll notice, it's gotta be new merchandise, collectibles and antiques only, not swap meet.
Thank you.
And so swap meet is handled under a different section entirely, and this is meant to allow for those collections of small suites that use the, the synergy of having a number of people, or having a number of, of retail opportunities very close together.
Mm-hmm.
Like if our arts council decided they wanted to open up an art studio, or art thing, and then you guts, yeah, okay.
Very good, you understand?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Non-vehicular kiosk, what, what is that?
Yeah, that's what I have.
That's a, that's a walk-up kiosk, like you have in, uh, commercial centers.
Like a red box? I'm not.
Uh, is that the movies?
Yeah, yeah, right.
Um, yeah, then it would, then it would be like that, yeah, like the ones in the mall and so forth. But you have places where you are asking to allow for, uh, and you're requiring that new commercial centers have community gathering spots. You may have a small informational kiosk, or a, a, a small retail, uh, kiosk of some other sort that, that would be appropriate for people to walk up to as opposed to driving up to and, uh, getting whatever service or, or materials out of that.
Again, why would it not be permitted in the North Gate?
Again, because it's anticipated that there wouldn't be that kind of a commercial center that would have a common area and so forth in order to have such a facility be there. But it could if you want, if you.
I just wanted to understand the logic.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, music and record video sales permitted across the board. Nurseries, retail sales only. And, uh, I had questioned, and material yards. Were there material yards somewhere else in the back here? And the only reason I bring this up is because we have a material yard in the EDC right now.
And it's not.
Didn't we have somebody come before us?
Yeah.
Dario, yeah, Dario wanted to put one down in the Southern Gateway.
Right along the freeway?
Yeah.
But that, he, I asked specifically, and he said it wouldn't be a nursery or whatever, it was gonna be a mulch.
Yeah.
Which would be not in this category, it'd be under something else.
Well, and, and that's why I, I wrote it in here, is, is this where a material yard would fit? Or do we have another designation somewhere else for material, materials yards?
They could call it a nursery.
They could indeed.
Yeah.
Um.
So do we need to define that?
We may have to, it's a use that I hadn't anticipated in this chart.
Okay.
We will investigate that and get back with you.
Okay.
Okay, so.
For now, it's, it say excludes mulch and material yards, because we don't want one there, right? In the EDC, I don't see that as a, do you see it as a use in this prime area?
I don't know, it, uh, it depends on the area. Not in the community core, but perhaps.
Well, I, I would refer to sec- on page, my page thirteen under agriculture is also as plant nurseries, and it's cultivation plants, indoor and outdoor, and retail sales permitted, so it's almost like we've got two of the same. But then in that section, it's n- it's only permitted in the, uh, North Gate and nowhere else.
I'd say this.
We see North Gate.
I don't think.
Right here, agriculture.
We actually have one.
Oh, I wrote, I wrote off it.
Yeah, but what's existing is existing, they're talking.
Okay.
For the future.
Yeah, we gotta think, what, what do we want in these areas, right?
Right.
And it's not that we don't want a nursery, but do we want, do we really want it in this area? I wouldn't say no, we, we're looking more professional, medical, retail.
Well, driving into the city from the North Gate and the Southern Gate, and then you've got your common, community core, I don't.
Okay, so, so we're, we're still dealing with nurseries, are we saying no nurseries?
I think he, Charles, Charles say he was gonna look into this one and get back to us?
Well, he's, he's looking into the, the designation for a material yard.
Okay.
So we'll, we'll, we'll leave that out, because I, I had handwritten that in as a question, but nurseries are permitted across the board.
I think I'd prefer it, if we would refer to the agricultural section and go with that one, where it's not permitted and only permitted in North Gate.
Well, think about, you know, the, the little mom, pop nursery, eh, but you think like an Armstrong's, it's more of a commercial entity? I don't mind, you have one of those in Temecula on the freeway, right next to the Vons or whatever that is. I'm okay with something like that, so how could we word it that we get something like that and not the?
A conditional use permit where they have to.
Certain standards. Yeah, how about that?
It's completely up to the commission.
Then, then I would say conditional peruse, use permit.
Change all of those to conditional use permit?
Yeah.
Yeah. This is the nurseries?
Yeah.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, coming down the line, I'm gonna go all the way down to services, does anybody have anything in that block before we get to services? Office, pawnbrokers, pets.
Yeah, the pawnbrokers.
Okay.
Um.
What's your concern?
Again, is that a wise, uh, decision to allow in the McCall area?
Yep, for now.
We do?
Mm-hmm.
Right over by the post office. At least used to.
That's true.
It's still there.
That's true. I was looking at the, I was looking at the core area, I was looking at the Menifee, at the McCall Boulevard, but near the school on the more, see, in the, on the east side of the freeway, where it is more of a neighborhood, uh, oriented area? Do we want?
But, but you've also got right, right along the freeway frontage there with those little shops next to the nursing home.
Right.
That's the only place it would really go, and because they're gonna want, so you're saying you don't even want it there?
Well, how do we?
Doesn't really make sense.
How do we, how do we say that they won't go further on down?
Yeah.
Cause that's all included.
That's true.
That you're gonna, so it, would it be a conditional use permit?
Well, you've done that before, where you've said east of the freeway only, or west of the freeway only?
Does the McCall go clear down to Menifee Road, I can't tell by this map and the lakes, see how it's all colored in there?
Menifee Road's not there, but, uh, no.
How far east does it go? What is that, is that, is that brown?
The orange grove? Didn't we say that was in between the hospital?
It goes about to the orange grove, straight past the hospital, and then the next thing is the Boulder Ridge Elementary School.
Okay.
Don't work on my map.
The last, the last.
Sorry about that.
Dude.
I should've got one of those maps somewhere.
Okay, so. Uh, pawnbrokers, you want, you, you wanna just exclude it from McCall?
I just, you know, I think about going into some cities I've driven in, and I see these pawn shops on corners.
It's kinda not, it's a lower degraded kind of a shop.
And I, and I worry about, you know.
Okay.
We can always put in a high-end.
High-end pawn shop.
I mean, if I have to make my meds, I'm gonna take that lawnmower out of my shed and go right across the street and pawn it.
Do, do we have a consensus to, to leave it out of the McCall area?
Yeah.
On the devlin, so, I can go either way.
Yeah.
Okay, we, we can, we can pull it out of the McCall area. Anything else for the remainder of the retail wholesale sales? All right, moving into services. Um, ambulance, blue printing, exterminating, small equipment rental.
On exterminating?
Mm-hmm.
Um, well, I guess it's conditional use, that's all right, okay.
Well, it says offices only, too, so.
Yeah.
Small equipment rental?
Um, community core again, do we want small equipment rental?
Well, that, uh.
In the community core?
No, I, 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 I would say no.
Okay, it's, right now, it's a conditional use permit.
Anybody else agree?
Sure.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, may not be located where visible from the freeway. Um, that one, I'm a little uneasy with, because we, small equipment rental is not a really high in demand business. And being able to attract people from the freeway is, is a good thing. Um, we already have some equipment on the south end.
Yeah, but do we want it?
Well, right, I, I agree, um, but conditionally, we can, we can put lipstick on a pig, but, um, you know, do we want to exclude it from any visibility along the freeway everywhere?
I think, yeah, cause you, you're wanting the higher revenue generating big boxes along the freeway, don't you, or the high-end professional? So let's, let's define what visible from the freeway is, I mean, you could say, you can see clear over to, to Santa Rosa. And I don't, I don't mind if he's over by Santa Rosa, how about immediately adjacent to the freeway, would that be better? Cause I don't wanna exclude him farther in.
I'm fine with that, uh, yeah, uh, we wanna be able to give him, give him something.
Yeah, so not immediately adjacent.
And that's only in the Northern Gate, McCall, Newport and Southern Gate?
Yeah, it's in the.
It's condi- it's conditionally allowed everywhere.
Right, but we.
Except for.
Except for the community core.
Community core, yeah.
Okay, clear Charles?
Mm-hmm.
Large equipment rental?
Let's have the same wording, not immediately adjacent to the freeway.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, with that?
Yeah.
Yes.
Now, that would just be, it's only, right now, it's only u- it's only allowed in the Northern Gate and Southern Gate.
Yeah.
Right.
They have freeway frontage, so.
So what, what did you say on, what was your wording?
Not, may not be.
Immediately, basically the first parcel off the freeway, would not be that first parcel.
Not, may not be located immediately adjacent to the freeway.
Well, I, I would use the word adjacent as opposed to immediately adjacent.
Adjacent, okay.
Okay. General office uses, photocopying, uh, photographic studio. Uh, physical therapy permitted across the board, the banks section there. Um, what is the difference here, why are mortgage and lending, condition use permitted and everything else is not, what's?
No, it's the cash, it's check cashing that's conditional. What are you looking at, am I looking at a different version?
My, my lines are.
Yeah.
Yeah, the line is messed up.
Okay, oh, okay, all right, all right, gotcha, perfect, all right, very good, now I understand.
Day, day in advance, yes.
Got it. Say no more, okay, this whole block here of personal services. Um, the only one I've got flagged is massage parlor, does anybody have anything else other than massage parlor?
Um, I have, um, cemeteries and mausoleums, I'm not sure if we want that in the community core.
Say it again, please.
Cemeteries and mausoleums, unclear if she wants it in the community core?
Thank you.
Yeah, I'd agree with that.
Uh, same here, yeah.
Okay, so, these are off by one line?
Uh.
Is that right?
Are they off, or is personal services a header to that section?
That's a header.
That's a header?
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so that would be crossed off, the community core. Um.
Anything else in that section?
Also, also, um, commercial laundry or self, do we want those in the community core, I'm just thinking of downtown, do we want a laundry?
I, I would think so, primarily because that's where, that's where the Menifee Town Center had talked about having some of that, that live-work type thing, where you have the, the businesses on the bottom floor, and you might have a, a, a house or a, um, a residential suite on the second or third floor, if that ever happened, those types of facilities, you would, you would like to have a laundromat in the area, I believe.
Okay.
Yeah, the, the problem with the laundromats is gonna be dealing with the waste, the waste streams that come out of there.
Okay, I, maybe a conditional use permit then, I don't know?
Yeah, I would see that.
A commercial or self-serve?
It's a lot depends on the technology that goes in.
I'm sorry, I, I'm, I'm only referring to self-serve, commercial-wise.
Yeah, that's what I'm.
I was looking at commercial.
Sorry, yep.
You want a commercial in the downtown?
Actually, oh, that's true.
I'd like to put a CUP in there. Well.
I would say not in the community core.
Yeah, I would think that would be more of an industrial area, okay.
The market's gonna dictate some of that.
Yeah.
So with the self-serve and him being, uh, Earl being concerned with the, what, the waste, do we want a conditional use?
Yeah, waste streams coming out of there, yeah.
What, what kind of waste are you concerned about, Earl?
Well, I'm dealing primarily with the, the types of chemicals that they are using, whether or not they're gonna have, uh.
In self-serve?
No, I was on a commercial.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, I was thinking more like the dry cleaners, where they had to deal with a lot of.
So you're only prohibiting it in the core, and it's permitted, uh, in the other three, other four?
Well, hold, hold on, do we, do we, we have, I mean, we have regulatory bodies that deal with that sort of.
Yes, we do, yeah.
Household weight of waste, so.
Yeah.
Do we permit it because we're scared of it, or do we let that agency deal with what they deal with? Just plain devil's advocate.
Yeah, uh, and, and I can agree, because, uh, when I was at DEH, that's what we did, laundry facilities, and we had a lot. They were undergoing a lot of technology in the dry cleaning business, but we still had a problem with the waste streams, how, how to get rid of like your, your lint and dust, the types of chemicals that are being used in those dryers and those dry cleaning machines.
Okay, so you want to make commercial, what now?
A conditional use.
Across the board?
Right.
Let's think about that, we only usually wanna do a conditional if we wanna control in some way, and you have to, you have to weigh it against, this is gonna cost that much more. Most of these CUPs are what, ten thousand or something, I know we're not supposed to talk about money, but you gotta be realistic. If it's a small mom and pop, if they need a dry cleaner for those people who are living there, do we really want to make it hard for them to come in when it's just a little s- dry cleaning shop?
Well, I, we're, we're still in commercial.
Right, and I would.
We're talking like your, your, your janitorial services that come and pick up your floor mats at your businesses and all your, your, your uniforms for your crews and things.
That's, that, that, does that, Charles, cover the small mom and pop dry cleaning store, the commercial, or no?
This would cover both.
Yeah, I'm concerned, I don't wanna drive the small mom and pop out, I could see, I could see, like you're saying, is we don't want some big industrial cleaner right next to the school and the movie theater.
Yeah, the other, the other thing is, you can say, uh, subject to the regulations, uh, of the local Department of Environmental Health. Because they have some really strict regs on that.
That goes without saying, it's, the state and the county already regulate that.
Exactly.
But even though we have it, a separate for dry cleaners permitted, and if we laundry commercial, eh, we have it, it's too different, you're saying we're gonna treat it all as one?
We can break it out, can't we?
It already is.
No, we.
Well, a dry cleaner is different than a, uh, commercial, uh, laundromat.
Self-serve.
Laundry.
Yeah.
Commercial laundromat could be something where, um, uh, the school district sends, um.
Band uniforms.
Band, yeah, very good, band uniforms, uh, to be cleaned.
Football jerseys.
Uh, or a local hotel that doesn't have its own facilities because of its size, sends it there, uh, their, you know, their daily linens to be cleaned and returned.
That I could see doing a CUP, but how about we break it out between that and do another, uh, classification of laundry, small mom and pop dry cleaning, however you wanna, I don't know what the wording would be, that should not have a CUP.
But with this kind of business, it would be, it basically, an enclosed building, everything's done inside, where you wouldn't know what's going on in there except the fact it signs his laundry on there.
Oh, okay, so that already is, I'm sorry, so that's already there, I'm sorry, I was, I didn't see that, so.
Yeah, we'll try and come up with two different categories.
Well, he just made the point, the dry cleaner is already there, I.
Yeah, that's good.
But a dry cleaner is not, eh, well, unless you're referring to a mom and pop as a dry cleaner.
That's what I'm referring to.
Ah, okay, then it is covered.
Okay, okay, can we define that then to make, I don't know if you need to re?
A dry cleaner is pretty, is pretty straightforward as to.
Okay.
They use chemicals in order to, uh, clean clothing as opposed to laundering, um, which is a.
Where they use water.
as opposed to laundering, um, which is a watering and soap process.
Right.
So did, did we want it then, were you hinting at doing, uh, CUP on the commercial then? Is that what everyone was saying? Or leaving it permitted, the community core?
CUP on the commercial.
On the commercial.
Across the board.
Across the board, okay.
What, Charles, can you give us input on that, if that's a waste decision?
Well, it would give you the opportunity to, if we break it down into smaller versus larger, you could do it by, say, square footage. Uh, any facility over twenty-five hundred square feet would need a conditional use permit. Those under twenty-five hundred square feet would be allowed by, by law.
I'm okay with that.
I feel good with that.
Yep.
Okay.
So it's CUP for greater than twenty-five hundred square feet, otherwise permitted.
Okay, any other concerns in the personal services aside from massage parlor?
Um, public storage, to me, that is the biggest waste of, of valuable use. We have one of those right along the freeway that slipped in, you know, down in the South Gate, the, that American Storage, whatever. They, they develop almost no sales tax revenue and they're a huge user of space. So I would say we should not permit them anymore in any EDC. Uh, or at least may, if you want it in the North Gate, but everything else should be banned.
Would a conditional use permit help that?
I don't want them at all, they're a waste of space, they're a wa- they're ugly and they don't generate no tax revenue. I mean, that's what it boils down to.
I don't know, but there's a lot of people that use them.
Well, it's fine, put them somewhere else.
Right, we have them all over town.
Yeah, and that's the point I was trying to make.
But do we want them along the fre- freeway in the EDC?
I, I would say no, I agree.
Yeah.
I would agree.
Okay.
Well, it, it says may not be located where visible from the freeway. Uh, maybe I'm the only one strong here, but I, 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 it's just such a waste of space, do we really want them anywhere?
I think I agree, not at all in the EDC.
Yeah, yeah, I agree with Chris.
Are we okay with that?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
I agree. Okay, massage parlors.
Uh, um, do we want them in the industrial part? Do we want them downtown?
Well, you've got Massage Envy over by Lowe's, they do it right. You've got the other one right here, which is hopefully closed pretty soon, for, for ancillary services.
Some, some would argue they do it right.
So since this says massage parlor, would it be included, say, with the chiropractic office too? Or is that broken down separate?
That would be in the chapter seventy-two, where it is broken down.
I would say just make it a conditional use permit in all five.
I could see except North Gate where that's going to be more industrial and.
Yeah, but you have some very large residential communities just to the west of there.
And I actually had it, I actually had it struck out of the South Gate myself.
South Gate, yeah, that's true.
Yeah, I would, I'd like to see it strike out of the South Gate.
South and North Gate and conditional and everything else.
Uh-huh, that's what I would like.
Okay.
But it does exclude chiropractic, that's what, I had that written down as a question as well. So that excludes chiropractic, okay.
Okay, um, fortune telling.
That's why I referred to that chapter.
Kennels. Recycling collection facilities. I had, uh, I had put in there not along the two fifteen for the recycling collection facilities, generally because they stockpile a lot of, basically garbage.
Yep.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so we don't want that appearance.
Nothing adjacent to the two fifteen.
I put not adjacent to two fifteen.
What about like, um, okay, so it has here like the less than five hundred square feet? Like, for instance, right off the freeway at Newport, you have behind Ralph's, you have a recycling facility.
That's true.
State mandates that you, that grocery stores have, uh, either a recycling onsite or, um, within a designated distance from them.
So we couldn't, we couldn't change that?
For the small ones, for the small ones. That's why I'm recommending the, um.
Five hundred square feet.
The, yeah, um, the size breakdown and the permitted in those areas. You can still call for a conditional use permit so that you can make sure that they're located in a fashion that is as least intrusive on the other commercial activity onsite as possible.
So like the one behind Ralph's, there is a recycling that takes plastic and cans, but there's also a truck there that's used for the Salvation Army, that's not part of the recycling.
Correct.
So how does that fit in here, or does it?
It's an ancillary.
It doesn't fit.
Yeah, it doesn't fit. That's, um.
As a community benefit.
That would have to be something we would have to, uh, investigate.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, 'cause they, they generally, uh, attract a lot of trash as well.
Correct.
They, they keep it real clean, I donate a lot.
They keep it clean over there, yeah.
They word and trash you for a while, whatever reason, they cleaned them up.
Yeah, it, it depends on where it is, because there's.
And it depends who's, depends who's running it. So how, so if we allow a use like that, who's to say in six months or a year that it changes ownership and the managing it, what it's going to be like?
I kind of doubt the salvage army truck will be changing ownership.
The what?
Correct, it's one organization, it's not, it's not a franchise situation.
But it's been a Salvation Army truck, and what I'm saying, it's been a Salvation Army truck since I can remember. Sometimes it's been clean, sometimes it hasn't been clean. So I think it's who's.
Correct, it is management of the, that particular.
That'd be, it'd be a code enforcement thing anyway, right?
Correct.
Okay.
And I draw your attention to the time and the fact that we're.
Got it, so anything else here, uh, recycling, are we good there?
I, I, actually, I'd like to wait and kind of finish up on recycling next time.
Okay, okay, all right. Um, all right, so we'll hold off on recycling until our next workshop.
Okay.
We will adjourn the workshop until, uh, it's, it's good about seven oh five, we get back in here and, and get going with the public hearings.
So that would be that Tuesday night, the twenty-fifth of November, you're going to continue?
It's supposed to be on a Tuesday.
Is that what we said, Tuesday?
Right, yeah, 'cause I'm going to be leaving town the next day.
And that was the one that I have, that community?
Oh, yeah, yeah, okay, so we can come back, we can go back to.
Okay. That service, Thanksgiving service?
Okay, well, I mean, just based on what we got through tonight, in, in an hour's time, we got through three pages, so. Whatever, whatever we miss, uh.
We, we're doing pretty good, because we only had one page.
Right, right, but what I'm saying is whatever sections you're not here for, we can go back and hit them.
And don't forget, the land use tables are usually the slowest and most complicated ones to deal with, so.
All right, let's take five and be back at seven oh five. All right, we'll call the meeting to order, it's about, about seven oh seven, Madam Clerk, uh, would you please take role?
Yes, sir, Commissioner Phillips.
President.
Commissioner Sobek.
Here.
Commissioner Thomas.
Here.
Vice Chair Metelko.
Here.
Chair Lees Meyer.
Here.
The letter. Commissioner Thomas may not have gotten a copy of that letter, would you please make sure he has one?
Thank you.
Probably on the back of your other letters.
All right, will we all please rise for the salute of our nation's flag? Put your right hand over your heart, ready, begin.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. I heard Grant, there's Grant.
He was trimming yesterday.
All right, any modifications to our agenda tonight?
No, sir.
Any additional presentations?
No, sir.
Any public comments for items not on the agenda?
Yes, Leanne Pollard.
If you would state your name for the record again?
My name is Leanne Pollard, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Um, I'm a, I've lived in Menifee for the past four years. Um, I'm a student at MSJC right now, and, uh, basically, I just beg your indulgence, I've never done this before, so I just want to get something on record. The two fifteen splits our community quite nicely in half. I live on the far side of the two fifteen. My dog and I are avid runners and hikers, and it seems that Menifee is trying to preserve and improve our outdoor spaces, uh, places to run, public parks, uh, hiking trails and things like that. Um, but what I'd like to get on record right now is a request for a green pedestrian bridge over the two fifteen connecting the East and West Spurs of La Piedra. So the school is there, uh, and it feeds directly into our future city center. I understand that there's a, an idea to put a pedestrian bridge on Holland Overpass, doesn't make sense. That's too far to walk for anyone. But the college is right at the, uh, the far side, the east side of, uh, La Piedra, and of course, our city center is on the west side. So a green pedestrian bridge, um, with a bicycle lane would be awesome to see here in, in Menifee.
Okay.
So, that's all I have, thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Parler.
Bonnie Brown.
Hi, I'm Bonnie Brown, I met with you guys on the eighth, talking about, uh, uh, creating the solar racks at, uh, our property on Scott Road of the two fifteen freeway. Uh, I've been there since nineteen eighty, my husband and I, and have a business there. Um, these solar racks were put under, um, uh, heading of accessory buildings. I actually pulled this permit, the electrical, on August nineteenth. Um, and then I went through what, for an accessory building, what you have to go through. And then, um, I was told that I could put a lot of, uh, hundred-and-twenty-foot, uh, square foot, uh, uh, carports out there and put the solar on top, that doesn't work for me. Then I was told that I could put ground-motored solar, and I found out today that what I asked for in a lot of communities is ground-motored solar. So, um, but the, the accessory building category that the city of Menifee has this under has created a financial burden to my family and my business. I paid, uh, two thousand five hundred dollars to have the planning commission just consider this project. Um, I actually have, uh, uh, permits for the solar panel, and I have permits for all the solar, but I have nothing to put it on. Um, I'm paying the bank for the solar panels, and, uh, I'm also paying the electric company, the eight hundred dollars a month, I pay them. Um, that's like two hundred and fifty haircuts, you know? I'm doing this one haircut at a time. So, um, I had a sun study that was done on the property, and I had removed two wonderful trees that I've seen grow over the last forty years. And, um, one was a two-hundred-foot silk oak and the other, one a pine. I had another, I had to cut down fifty feet, and I had to slice her in half, take half her girth, so that the sun, the solar gets the sun. So then we had a meeting in October, um, that I was actually there with Charles Leclerc and, and some, uh, of the other girls. And he told me I needed to plant trees to cover these structures that are accessory buildings. Well, it's not solar, I mean, it's not shader, it is actually solar. I can't do the trees and I really don't want to cut down the other tree because now they're saying that I have to plant them five feet apart when they're engineered to be right together. I've got all kinds of engineering where, I've got pictures, I actually shared you guys a picture that they're planted six inches apart. So, you know, this has just been really hard, and, um, I have other people here that have more to say about this and, and are smarter than I am, but I'm just letting you know that, um, I am a citizen and, and I just need to look at this because it is hard, okay?
Thank you, Bonnie.
John Buchanan.
Bonnie Minchin, I'm John Buchanan, I'm here to represent Bonnie Brown tonight, uh, here tonight with TK Littick, who are the contractor on the job, or owner here, Chris Jones is here also. But we're a local company, we have twelve employees who live in Menifee, Chris Jones himself resides in Menifee. All we're simply attempting to do is get the city of Menifee to catch up with the state of California. They classify these things as solar carports, they have a separate category for that. The department, um, let's see, one second, the state of architecture, which is an actual department in state of California, they have an expedited one-day process for a solar carport. Baja Carports, which is our contractor who's fabricating the carports for us, they are one of the approved contractors for these carports. So if they can get done at the state of California for public schools, for government buildings, for public libraries, I'm, I'm assuming the city of Menifee can make it possible to do it here also. Uh, but Marietta School District, as you may probably well aware, in two thousand twelve, they put solar carports at all nineteen schools. You can go see them at any point in time if you want to, they got one in administration building in Marietta. Temecula has approved six separate solar carports already since two thousand twelve. It is an issue, and, uh, we're all just asking for fairness, you know, Bonnie's been over backwards to give you guys what you wanted, and she's just being stonewalled, so all we're asking is fairness, plain and simple.
Okay.
Katie Munir.
Well, tonight, I'm going to read some of Lees Meyer's campaign promises. Let's get a closer look at this, get out and vote and have your vote heard. Well, Menifee, today is the day that we've been waiting for, all of his promises. I'll fight hard for the people of Menifee, I will fight for more park spaces, on and on it goes. Yet he's not transparent, so can we believe any of these? I suppose you all heard the lies he's told about his felony conviction, should not even run for office with a felony for Penal Code twelve oh three point four. And let me give you the difference, you say it's a non-issue, the difference between a misdemeanor and a felony when it pertains to arson. A misdemeanor shows there is no intent to do harm to a person or property. A felony shows there is intent to do harm to persons or property. Guess the story your mom tells isn't exactly the truth either, since you were charged with a felony. Lisa, let's go on to your story. You were told personally by Scott Mann that he created and delivered deceptive slanderous flyers on his opponents in two thousand twelve. Scott would like to say, oh, that was two years ago, poor me. The result of that election, Scott won. Scott told you that he was sorry and he would never do it again. Fast forward to this election, Scott created and delivered slanderous material, signs, and through his attorney filed charges to the DA, which were only to go to the FPPC. So that promise that Scott made to you was a big lie, one more lie he's told. I don't think Scott has any morals and knows what it means to be sorry for anything he does. And you covered his lies by not standing up and exposing it to the public. Due to your cover-up, Lisa, an innocent man was arrested and went to jail, and now we have a convicted felon in Tom's seat, all because of you not telling the truth. The truth is that Scott has used you and your church to ensure his votes. If you had told the truth months ago, an innocent man would not have gone to jail, and you would not have Scott's sins to live with, covering someone else's sins makes it your own.
I have no further speakers on this item.
Okay, Mr. Leclerc, on the item regarding the solar structure, what, where do we stand with that? Just looking for a little clarity, is there, is there an application in, I mean, can we even talk about this?
The, uh, individual has submitted a request for an accessory structure. In our code, what she's asking for is an accessory structure. In our code, we charge for, uh, we have a deposit of twenty-five hundred dollars for the review of that accessory structure. The fact that they're putting a solar panel on, or solar panels on it, doesn't change that basic structure from what we understand it to be. In your development code, you could create a new category of structure and a new, um, uh, review process if you so desire. I probably would recommend against that because the difference between a carport as an accessory structure and a carport with solar panels on it is probably minimal relative to the property and surrounding properties. But it is something that you can consider in your new development code.
Okay.
So what do we need to do to bring it, bring the process as simple as Marietta-Temecula state rather than what we're putting them through right now?
And you can initiate a development code amendment that addresses that section of the municipal code that says that accessory buildings need to have that kind of a review.
Well, it, it sounds like we need to have a different bucket altogether and have a solar structure in, in, in the code.
And that could be a, a code, a code amendment that you initiate.
Okay.
Can we put that on the agenda?
You can put it on the agenda to direct staff to initiate it, yes, a future agenda.
Okay, I would definitely want to do that.
And similar to.
I know it's not the commission's purview to discuss fees, but could those fees that they've paid be applied towards that other permit once we develop that in the code? I hate to see all that go down the tubes and then have them have to start a whole new application because we rewrote the, rewrote the code.
What they have is a deposit, we work against the deposit. So any work that will have begun since they initiated that deposit and when and if that code is changed, would be charged against that account.
Okay, so we want to stop working on the deposit?
I would discourage working on the, stopping working on the deposit. I would discourage working on the, stopping working on the deposit because that just prolongs the amount of time it would take. It will take minimum of four months to get a code amendment through the process and be in effect. I don't believe that the, the property owner wants to wait four months to get to that point.
Well, it doesn't, doesn't sound like they have an option. It sounds like they either wait four months or they don't get it at all, is what it's sounding like.
No, we're, we're working on the, the accessory building. We have been working on it.
But, but under the current code, will we be forcing them to do it in a way that was not intended, now there's cutting down more trees or building this, that?
I'm not clear what her reference to cutting down trees. She elected to cut down trees on her property for her own purpose. The additional trees that are required are not to cover their solar panels, but when you have a parking lot, our code says you need to have shade of 50%. You can locate those trees to shade 50% that will not have any impact upon the location of the solar panels.
Okay. Let's, let's get this on the agenda for the next time we can so we can, we can dive in this a little bit more. Sounds like we might need to make an adjustment in the code. There are no more, speaker says, Republican?
No, sir.
Okay. That'll send us to the approval of our October 22nd minutes. Are there any amendments? Hearing not entertain a motion?
Make a motion, we approve the minutes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Nothing on our consent calendar, which brings us to item 9.1, the public hearing for specific plan amendment 2012-115 and change of zone. Mr. Leclerc, you have a staff report?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Before we begin, we do have a request from the applicant to continue this item to a date certain. You had requested that additional information be provided to the commission in regard to a possible provision to the site plan itself. The applicant has not had the opportunity to complete that process. In addition, the applicant is not here in order to address any questions and/or comments that may be received during public comment tonight. With that, we recommend that you continue this item to a date certain so that it can be brought back to you and addressed. You do have a number of people in the audience that are here and would like to speak to the commission. You also have received a number of items in your blue folders, correspondence, emails, and/or letters. Those become part of the record. It's up to the commission as to whether or not you would like to hear comments tonight. The applicant has the opportunity to review the video of tonight's meeting or you can continue this item to a date certain and then the members of the audience that would like to speak can come at that meeting and address the commission and the applicant would have the opportunity then to respond to those comments.
Okay.
If you want to have a presentation, Lisa's available for a presentation, or if you simply want to take input from the public, you can do that as well. You would open the pub, you would open the continued public hearing, take the comments, and then continue the open hearing to a date certain.
All right, thank you. Yeah, we won't, we won't indulge in the staff report because it sounds like the project's evolving anyway, sorry. But we will open the continued public hearing at, what is it, 7:25, so we can take those public comments into the record.
After that, do we have to question time for questions for staff? I do have one or two questions on the project.
Certainly, yeah, we can, we can opine a little bit.
Ready for those?
Go ahead, please.
Nadine Matthews.
Before we begin with the public comments, I'm sorry, Ms. Matthews, is there anybody that wishes to disclose any ex parte communications? Ms. Sobek?
Yes, I would. Before we start the public hearing, I'd like to let you know, as fellow commissioners in the community know, that I've had several conversations with residents in the community about the Menifee Lakes Plaza. I talked to the homeowners president of Palmilla Housing Development and shared with him that I was aware that a lot of seniors don't like to come out at night, that some of them just don't leave their home a lot, but I have concerns and I let him know that they are welcome to always send an email to the city. They're welcome to give phone calls, they're welcome to write letters. He actually asked for my address and since that, and I received several letters at my home address. In future, I will make sure that those are sent to City Hall so that all the commissioners receive those and not having to get a copy at the last minute, and I apologize for that. I received also several emails. A resident from the Oasis, a Mr. Yarborough, actually called me personally, wanted to sit down and share his views. He called me this morning, letting me know he was unable to make it tonight, wanted to make sure his, his views were on the public comment and that he thought this shopping center was a good thing, the Menifee Lakes Plaza, and that we as commissioners should look ahead at our population growth. So I wanted to make sure that that was on record.
And then copies of all your letters are with us?
And all the letters have been turned in.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you. Ms. Matthews, I am sorry, go ahead.
That's okay. Yes, I'm a resident of Palmilla, that's adjacent, right across the street from the development itself, and that is a 55-plus, so it's a senior community. And I'm addressing you today just, just to kind of give my views and I know there's several here today from my development that I'm sure have very similar or maybe different views, but, you know, we're, we're happy to see, or I'm happy to see, a center be built there because that way we'll get rid of all that dust and dirt. But I think we have to be careful as a city as to what goes into that corner in, in that area because, as you know, we have such bad problems with traffic on Newport and, of course, that corner of Newport and Antelope. My concern is I have heard that, you know, there's a proposal for a hotel to go there and my main concern is that I just feel that, that I'm not opposed to a hotel for the City of Menifee, I just want to make that clear. I think that if there is to be a hotel, I think it should be on this side of the freeway, right here in this lot across from City Hall and close to all the businesses and offices and also some of the centers and the restaurants where people that come into our city can walk to and enjoy versus being on the other side of the freeway. And I can tell you as a resident of, of Menifee for the last almost four years that I'm a very active person, I like to walk, I like to ride my bike, and I have not ridden my bike again since I crossed over the bridge because it is just a hazard, it's so dangerous. And as a senior, now that I'm a senior citizen, it just makes it even, you know, scarier because, you know, walking across, you are putting your life in your hands. Also, another thing, oh, does that mean I'm done, this light?
No, you're okay, go ahead.
Oh. The other, the other thing is, a friend of mine and I, we walk the lake all the time and putting over there on that corner, even, even just having a presence with, I know this is getting off the subject a little bit, but getting a policeman there to watch that traffic because we put our life in our hands crossing over to get over to the lake and we don't have enough of that going on. When we're trying to cross, people are speeding around us, even, we're on the street and they're speeding around us to go where they want to go. So anyway, that's another concern. But anyway, back to the center itself, I think, it's my proposal that we put some really nice stores in there, like I'd love to see a Trader Joe's, a Whole Foods, a Sprouts, a Baron Market, a Golden Spoon, Olive Buck Cakes, an Italian or French deli, a Chico's boutique, a Francesca's boutique, a Red Lobster, an Olive Garden, or Mimi's Cafe. There's my wish list.
All right. Thank you.
Christine Harwood.
Hello, my name is Christine Harwood and I'm speaking in representative of my father who's an elder, I'm senior citizen, he's elder. We live in the same house, Palmilla resident, and I did send you a letter, Lisa, and we did get a call asking why we gave a return envelope. It was because it was in our, in our development newspaper saying if you wanted a response, so that's why I did that. So my concern is also regarding the development and how the city has not really planned on the traffic, you know, I'm not opposed to the development, but are you aware of what's going on right now? I mean, I was up all night, Monday night, I had a holiday on the Tuesday, but because of the construction noise and the lights, the floodlights, the dog barking, you know, what's going on, it kept me up all night. They don't even start until like nine o'clock, but at 4:30 I was still awake, they were just closing up for the day. So it's very noisy. And yeah, there are some seniors that don't have good hearing, but it does affect us that don't have the hearing problem. Okay? And my thoughts are, you should probably first work on the clover intersections to get on the freeway, at least, you know, that would help at both Scott Road and Newport. You don't have that very well established. And get that hall and overpass established before you start this construction. I have waited three signals just to get from Palmilla over to the other side where Ralph's is, directionally challenged, I guess that's south, just because of the gridlock. People go into the intersection and they, they don't have the courtesy to say, "Oh, can I make it through?" So either I agree a policeman or, or something, a red light district, some, a red light camera. Red light district, sorry. Red light camera.
That's something we can talk about.
No, no, I don't want that, sorry. But getting that corrected because there's so much going on that people don't care about other people's lives, they just want to get through that intersection and it is very hazardous. So I would say you first need to work on that development to reduce the traffic between Newport, you know, over, the overpass of Newport. Expand the bridge one more time or something, but it's too much, so, and then most of it's in, in the letter too. So I'd like you to address those items and hopefully the developer will, will look at not only what they're putting in to make sure it's good for all the community versus having a parking structure which could create some not-so-good elements, people wanting to hide. We've had, I live budding up to Antelope, okay, near Pompous, okay, I'm three houses in. And we've already had people jump on the grade to get into the fence next to us, you know, so they've broken into the neighbor's house. So when you have something where they can go hide, that's going to become more prevalent. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Harmon. I'll go outside the box on this one and ask Mr. Smith if you can opine a little bit on some of that, that noise that she's talking about and maybe if you, if you happen to know off the cuff, some of the improvements that'll be coming along with this project as far as lane dedication, things like that, if we can just briefly touch on that.
Sure. I'll be very brief. Apologize about the noise from the utility relocations that are happening out there on Newport. As some of you may know, that's in preparation for the full interchange work that will be underway at the beginning of 2015. My, my information is available anytime you see something that you'd like addressed on that, please get ahold of me and I will get back to you regarding that. As far as the project is concerned, Menifee Lakes Plaza, this project was approved by Riverside County before we incorporated. They do have a current plot plan on that project and they are moving forward with some of that work. The street improvements, we have worked with the applicant to enhance and we believe, the Traffic Division believe, that those enhancements will improve the safety of that corridor. As most of you experience, there are vehicles that speed through there, there's a lack of control. We will be adding another controlled intersection there as well as a stop sign, extra, additional width, a median, and these items will provide a safer corridor for traffic to move on. And we'll continually to monitor this area and where stop signs are proposed, it may warrant traffic signals. But we are very much aware of the, of the condition of the traffic there.
Thank you.
Gloria Sanchez.
I'm really disappointed that the developer is not here today when last time we were here, he agreed to send out a letter to the HOAs and that's why most of the people are here, because they wanted their comments heard by him, for him. And with that said, I'd like to say that we all know that development is coming to Menifee, but that particular area is very important to the Oasis residents and the Palmilla residents and how it is going to impact their lives. Not only is the traffic going to be greater and it's good that we, I hear about infrastructure going in, that's always good, and I think it should be done even prior to even going to development. I hope that the developer listens to what we say tonight. I hope he looks at this video to understand that, yes, we want development, but we want the development that's going to be, impact the residents, the least evasive type of development. We do need smart development, we do need, as people have said here, a Baron's, a Sprouts, higher-end restaurants. And when you look at what's coming, coming down the line as far as the type of restaurants we're getting in, they're all fast foods. We're going to be known as the Menifee Fast Food City. And I don't think we should be proud of that. I think we should, you know, we should think higher up, we should think it can be done if we speak to these developers, if we speak to the restaurateurs, if we speak to higher end stores. There's no reason we can't get into a Stein Mart, there's no reason why we can't get into a Chico's, there's no reason why we can't get a, a Mimi's Cafe, Richie's Diner, you know, we can get greater restaurants than that. But I think, like I say, and you, and I've heard it said, it's going to be developed and we realize that, we understand that. But when you do this, think about the surrounding area, think about the people that are going to be impacted by the development and how it's going to impact us at night when those lights are on all night long. We're a little further away, the Oasis, but the people who live in Palmilla will see those lights 24/7 and that's going to really impact the person living right off the street of Antelope and the noise that comes with it. There will be generated noise. And I don't agree that we should have a fitness center there. We already have enough fitness centers here in the City of Menifee. I know that and I congratulate each and every one of you, I think you're doing a great job, but please remember that you serve those that appointed you, but don't forget that you serve the citizens of Menifee. Thank you.
Thank you, my name is Terri Paredes.
Sorry.
But that's okay. I am a resident of the Oasis. I just wanted to make it clear that not all the residents in the Oasis are hard of hearing or can't get out. There are younger ones and it's very important of the project that you're developing and I do appreciate the time that you're putting into this and listening to us. There's a letter or an email or letter that was sent with 107 signatures on it from members of the Oasis. And I was going to read it, but basically it comes down to the fact that we're, they are concerned about the 40 feet for the hotel. They don't want it to be that high. We don't want a structure that's blocking everything or taking up in the corner. We want a decent hotel, hopefully a hotel that'll bring a nice dinner restaurant or not a Motel 6. We want something that's going to be nice that maybe we can go out and have, sit dinner, have dinner, something kind of like that's in Corona off of the 215 freeway where they've got the little lake there and I know we don't have the land for that, but something that's really nice and that we can do for that. Also, I am also personally against the fitness center. We've got way too many in the city already and putting one there for 24 hours, having traffic come in all the time is not something that we're looking for. We think that we could come up with something else that's more prevalent for the area and something that would draw the community there to make it a nice center. For the gas station, speaking for myself also, I'd like the For the gas station, speaking for myself also, I'd like the gas station to be able to accommodate a lot of the RVs and stuff and not where we have to drive to different areas to be able to get gas for our RVs and our trucks. So an easy in and easy, sorry, easy in, easy access. And the height to accommodate the RVs would be nice, because I don't think we have too many of those places like that. Thank you for your time.
Penelope Vagon.
I too live in the Oasis.
What's your name again, ma'am, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry?
Your name again.
Penelope Vagon. I too live in the Oasis and I am against the hotel. Hopefully you're going to put it over here, not over there. There's no room for traffic in and out of that little area. There's too much traffic coming down, going up that road. There's the Palmyra, there's the Oasis, there are the people who live in the hill. They come down that hill tally sixty-five miles an hour, come to the stop sign, slam on their brakes, make the arterial, go right through it and go forty-five miles an hour up to the intersection, slam on their brakes, make the right turn, get on the freeway. There's no room for cars or people to go in to get into a hotel. Because there's no room for people going in and out of that location. Also, if you look, there are enough gas stations on this road, Newport out here, there must be five. We don't need another gas station down at Menifee. There are no, there are more gas stations on our road, Newport, than there are on the freeways. If you get off at every mile on the freeway, there's a gas station. We've got five or six free gas stations in this limited space. We don't need any more gas stations. There are too many here. You put them in, you've allowed them to come in, maybe they're giving you more money to get in here. We don't need them. We need to draw people who have money to put in good businesses, good restaurants. We don't need in and out thing, not, excuse me, that, not that restaurant, but we don't need takeaway food. We need nice restaurants. Don't forget, Audie Murphy Land is going in. Those people are moneyed people. They're coming here with a lot of money. They're expecting to come here and find something à la Temecula. And you're putting in what I consider to be a dump town center. You're putting in fast food, fast food, fast food. Do you know how many pizza places there are here between Sun City? There must be ten pizza places, all takeout. There's Wendy's, there's In-N-Out, there's Jack in the Box, there's Carl's Juniors. There must be fifteen already here in Menifee for in and out food. That doesn't count the trash that they bring that we have to pick up. They throw, they eat the, they throw it out of their car, they throw the drinks out, the, the place is littered. If you go down the street, you'll see it. Now, they're not recycling, they just throw it out their window, they don't care, they don't live here, or maybe they do live. Who cares? I want you to think about what you're putting here. Bring in quality, quality, quality. We're a better, we're a better city than some of the things that you're trying to bring in here. We need nice businesses, we need bigger, we need a Stein Mart, we need nice, nice stores. We don't need these little tiny things that are not going to do anything. They'll come in, make a business and disappear after a year because they can't make it.
All right, Ms. Vagon.
We need big, big things. We need a Macy's, we need a Penny's, we need a Sears.
Ms. Vagon?
Whatever. Penny, well, my name's Penelope, not Penny.
We understand, we understand.
So, but it's a joke, okay. But we need, we need quality things and because of...
Ma'am, ma'am, hold on, ma'am.
That place going in, we need more.
Ma'am, excuse me, you've allocated all the time you have, we understand your, okay, thank you.
Shirley Carpenter.
Good evening. I've heard, I'm Shirley Carpenter from the Palmilla community, the fifty-five and over. I've heard so far that we've having, we're going to have in the Menifee Plaza, a hotel, a gas station, a fitness center, which I do not want unless it caters to the Silver Sneakers for sixty-five and, or fifty-five and over, because if it's right across from us, we should be able to access it. But my question is, is it possible for the commission to tell us exactly what businesses are going in there? You know, your majors one, two, and three?
We, we don't know any more than you do, as far as the users that are coming in. All we know about is the fitness center and the gas station.
Is that through, well, who determines that?
The market, the, the...
No, I mean, does the developer determine that or do you determine that?
It's, it's abnormal for me to engage with you at this point, but I'll just tell you because everybody's here. Typically what happens is, is the developer will have shell buildings available for different businesses to come in. And those businesses will do a study and find out if it's, it's a good place, a good fit for them. They'll sign a lease with the developer, that sort of thing. The developer's only going to be building the project, not the actual businesses within the project.
Okay, thank you. So those are just structures that are being built right now?
Typically, they won't even build the shelves unless they have a signed lease. The only things that, that we understand that they have leases for are the fitness center and the gas station.
Okay, thank you.
Shirley Condone? Is there a Shirley Condone? Okay.
Good evening. Oh, Lisa, I tried to send you an email this evening, but it came back to me. Your email address at city council came back to me.
It's on, it's on the city website.
What?
You can get it from the city clerk before you leave tonight.
Yeah, and on the city website.
Just to make sure you got the right address.
Thank you, thank you. Well, I know you're talking about putting a fitness center in here. I strongly object to that because I do not like a box-like building with tiny windows. And of course, the architecture of LA Fitness is unbelievably wrong for this area. And of course, it is not going to facilitate Silver Sneakers for two communities here which need that. So I absolutely do not want that here. I think what I'm looking for in this area, I'd like something special now. We have all of the main resource stores that we need here. I think we need to really go somewhere that would make Menifee special. I'd like to see, it might sound a little, you know, farfetched, but I'd like to see a, a French bakery here. I'd like to see a bookstore. I would like to see a park-like appearance with shade trees with seating underneath in that area. I want a jogging and walking track within the area. I want parking behind the stores near the two fifteen Parkway. I do not want to see cars parked along Antelope on that side there. I do not want a gas station, we have enough, and there is one already, there is one already being built in Menifee on Antelope. I want small elegant boutique-like stores. I would like a high-quality delicatessen which serves meals. Whole Foods would be a huge asset to this city. I do not want any more chain restaurants. We need quality, not quantity. Thank you.
Anzel Bolles.
Hi, my name is Anzel Bolles, B-O-L-E-S. And I live at the Oasis. I spoke last time just sort of off the hip because I listened for a while and then decided I needed to speak up. Tonight I have a little more cohesiveness, I hope, to my presentation. I've done some, I did a search on my computer for fitness centers in Menifee, and the results gave me six within three miles of this site, that they're wanting to put another one. I don't think we need more than six. We've got them on, we got Menifee Fitness twenty-four seven, we got Quantum Fitness on Bradley, we got Fitness nineteen, we've got Curves in Sun City, we got Walker Physical Therapy on Bradley, we got Menifee Valley Health Club on Bradley. And those all came up as current on my phone when I searched for a fitness center here. So the location in question is not convenient also, as the developer pictured, put a picture for us of, that would be seen from the freeway and it would be convenient to hop on and hop off of the exits and come over to Antelope to do their fitness. I've asked several people about the interest they would have that don't live in our area, but I know outside of the Oasis and Palmyra, and asked them if they would like to join a fitness center at that location, if that would be feasible for them. They looked at me like I was nuts because they know what the problems are getting on the freeway and off the freeway and over the intersection and down to Newport and Antelope, because it's a nightmare most of the time, as most of the people here have mentioned to you. And I think, what I heard from the people, was if they were to get off the exit at two fifteen and go around up over the bridge, down to Newport and, and Antelope and turn and go down to the fitness center, they'd only probably do that one time and get back on the freeway, you know, try and get back and retrace their steps to go. They're not going to want to do that on a regular basis, and the people in our area don't want it, as you've heard. To help with the congestion, the residents at the Oasis and, and friends of mine that I have in Palmyra that I've talked with are looking forward to more amenities on our side of the bridge. We could help cut down on some of the congestion if we had stuff on our side and didn't have to cross the bridge ourselves. And a lot of us even go up and over the hill, the back way to get to Sun City and other places now, so we don't have to contend with it. I've had friends have accidents and things like that down at that intersection, it's just horrible. So to keep us on our side of the world for a good portion of the time, we need some specialty markets, possibly a Barren's Market, Fresh and Easy as we've spoken about, food establishments, restaurants that are sit down for us to eat.
Ms. Bolles, that's your time.
Pardon me?
That is your time.
Okay. So look at quality things for us on our side and we'll help eliminate some of the traffic. And thank you for your time. I do just want to say one thing, and I know, I know I'm running over, but I believe your, your responsibility is to consider the interest of our citizens and please hear our concerns and act in accordance. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
No further speakers, sir.
Okay. All right, so we're going to be continuing this off calendar, my understanding. Do you...
No, to a date certain.
Oh, you have a date in mind? I was, I was going to understand you did not have a date.
We don't have a, a set date to you to continue it to. November twenty-fifth is the next Planning Commission meeting. That agenda is getting a little bit full with a few items, and it is the Tuesday before Thanksgiving. The next available Planning Commission meeting will be on December tenth. And then the following is Christmas Eve and we are closed on Christmas Eve. So if you would like to continue it to December tenth or another meeting, please let us know.
Has, I don't want to interrupt you, but has the developer or the applicant, have they kind of hinted as to what would work for them?
No.
No? It's up to you.
So we can just go with December tenth?
Yeah.
It's up to the commission.
Unless they want to continue it again.
They make a motion in a second.
Personally, I'd like to see it in January.
Do we, do we have discussion?
I have a few questions and comments for the commission.
Go ahead.
One thing I wanted to clarify with Charles is I sent an email out about the seating. And I, did the rest of the commission see that? Did you send out to the rest of the commission about having them place on the, on the plans to specifically designate those seating areas, the five thousand square foot of seating areas, and making them an architectural component, not just counting the areas in front of the stores?
Right, we have had that discussion with them. We, we were waiting for their revised plan to see if they adhere to that.
I'm not sure if the rest of the commission got that email. I sent an email to Charles saying, my concern was, in some of the comments made by Larry, that well, as soon as, say, a store develops, they're going to put some chairs out front and call that outdoor seating. Well, that was not the intention of that. So I sent an email to Charles saying, I, when they come back with their map and their, and their layout, I wanted to see specific architectural areas of seating with water features and trees and things that are specifically designated for that. So I just wanted to make sure that's happening.
Well, we've passed along the message, whether it's happening, we don't know until they resubmit.
So hopefully the commission will hold him to that, because his interpretation, I think, and what ours were two different things, and it would address some of the concerns here. Second item, I just wanted to share with the commission, I did a little impromptu survey in Temecula. There was a concern about the height of the hotel. And originally, we had talked about a three-story max, and then we just did, I think, the forty-five-foot max. It, it was turned into a forty-five-foot high max rather than a number of floors. If in Temecula, I called one, two, three, four, five, six hotels, Hampton Inn, Spring Hill Inn, Extended Stay, Fairfield, Holiday Inn Express are all three floors. The Embassy Suites is five floors, but it sits kind of in a hole. So you can have high-quality hotels with a three-floor max. You just basically have to enforce it with the development. So I think that may be something I'd encourage the commission to encourage when they come back with the plans, that they understand that it is a, a three-floor max and we can still stay away from the Motel Sixes and still get the nice, the nice hotels.
The commission's action was a forty-five-foot reference, which is in the specific plan. You decided not to take specific direction to the applicant in regards to the number of floors. If that is an issue, then the commission needs to advise staff so that we can advise the applicant. At this point, the issue had been resolved as a height limit, not a floor limit.
And I'm wanting to change that. Myself, we'll need to discuss it as a commission, so I bring it up so the commission can think about it. So that's an issue we may need to bring up.
Ms. Resub?
Yes, I actually thought that we had discussed a three-story. When I had done, when I had done my survey also in Marietta and Temecula and went along the freeway and checked out those quality hotels that are along the freeway, they're all three stories, and some of them are just really, really beautiful hotels. Is there any way that staff could share, could we get pictures of those hotels? And to share with, maybe bring those back at our next meeting? That we could also discuss the architecture and the quality of those hotels and be able to share that with the applicant so they're clear with our understanding and that we can have a good discussion to make sure we're all on the same page?
Yes, we can get, just simply on Google Earth, you can get pictures of the fronts of them and sides of these hotels.
So I, I would, I would like to have that, because that's a really big concern. I did have, one of the, one of the residents of Palmyra did share with me their concern of human trafficking and be, and where the hotels are being located. That's a big concern. And so I know that this developer...
Are you saying that there's human trafficking going on in the hotel?
There's, and they're coming across the board, all kinds of hotels, not just motels. And so that's a big concern, especially if a hotel is located in this type of neighborhood. I know the ones in Temecula, Marietta, they're in a business areas. There aren't any adjacent to neighborhoods. And so that's a big concern that we need to take a look at as a commission. So...
You solve a lot of that problem by having a higher quality hotel than...
No, they're being, human trafficking is being done in, not, not just motels. They're being done in high-quality hotels as well, and it's, it's not just one area, it's all over. So that's a concern. over. So that's a concern. So I'd like to, to address it. And, and again, this developer brought this with Riverside County. What year was it that this development was first initiated?
The application was submitted to the county of Riverside in 2005 or 2006. The original project was approved by the city, actually by the planning commission, in November 10th, 2009, I think.
First became a commission.
Okay.
And then extensions of that plot plan were approved by this planning commission last year.
So I just, I just know it's been on the books for a little while. The neighborhoods may have changed a little bit and I just think we just need to really look at this carefully. Thank you.
I have one question. It seems that we keep extending and extending and extending and every time we have these extensions, the developer comes up with something new. And I think I have a problem with that. And I don't know whether my problem or my concern is legitimate or not, but I'm kind of exasperated about this whole thing, about a five-year extension, just blanket. And I may be stepping on the wrong grounds, but the more I hear about these extensions, the less I'm inclined to agree with what is proposed to be done. Because now I'm getting more and more confused as to exactly what does the developer want to do there, other than stick a gas station in there and I have to agree with the audience. A hotel in the middle of a residential area doesn't make any sense. And so I have, please, because I want to be very brief. My, my real concern here is all these extensions. Is there a way that we can put the skids on that? Or just say, okay, you only have one or two more years and that's it. Then you're going to have to go back to the drawing board and come back with something else.
You have in place now a specific plan that establishes a time horizons and allowed extensions. The specific plan amendment being offered to you for your consideration and recommendation to the city council establishes alternative time extensions. And if you do not believe that those lengths of time are appropriate, your recommendation to the city council can be a different timeframe or not to amend the specific plan. Same as the issue with the fitness facility. That is not a permitted use at the moment. It would require passage of this specific plan amendment in order for that to take place. That is one of the issues that you are being asked to review and forward to the city council.
Do you understand, Earl?
Yes, I do.
Okay. Any other comments on the project?
I just wanted to ask, because we gave an extension, I believe, what, in 2013, a time extension? How long of an extension did we give them? Was it two years?
It was one year.
One year? And the one year is almost up, isn't it?
Yes.
Okay. With that, we entertain a motion to continue this to date certain.
And I would suggest December 10th.
Okay. Anybody care to make the motion?
Before you do that, to be fair to the developer, if we're going, it sounds like the fitness center's not supported, at least by this part of the community, what is the commission thinking of? I, I mean, we got to balance the developer with the city's needs. If, if he's going to spend this money changing things that come to us and he has a fitness center sitting there and then we're going to just blow it out of the water, he should know now. So is the commission tending towards allowing this fitness center or not allowing it?
I'm against it.
I, I'm listening to the residents and their comments they've made. I believe that if there was a fitness center coming in there, that it needs to be able to service the seniors that live in that, that community. But if, that, for instance, like a Silver Sneakers, that would be my only. So that would be listening to what their comments were and what they said.
I'd like to ask the city engineer, you mentioned earlier the Newport interchange was going to start in 2015. What's the expected completion time on that?
Eighteen months.
So mid-16.
So mid-16 and I'm assuming, let me ask a question then. Is it going to change an F intersection to an A?
Well, right now, we don't have an F in that, in that location, but it will improve, it will improve the, the intersection at Antelope and here at Hahn.
That one's not considered an F?
No, it's not.
Oh, I'd hate to see an F.
Is it a D right now?
I would too.
Is, have I heard that the developer has given property to help that, with the clover leaves?
That is correct. He has dedicated the property necessary to allow the northbound on-ramp to be constructed.
So, so Mark, again, I, I just don't want December 10th, is it, to come along and he comes up with, spends another hundred grand on elevations and we just blow it out of the water. Let's be fair to him. Are we, if we're going to support it, we're supporting? If we're not, he should, we should at least communicate what we're tending towards. So Mark, what is your thoughts on it?
I, I'm okay with the fitness. As, as long as, like I said before, I want, I didn't like the location of it. I want to see what he comes back. I have to see what he comes back with. Because if, I want to see it, sort of like Commissioner Thomas said earlier, we'll, we'll approve something and then they come back three years later and say, oh yeah, we want an extension of time, and then they start changing everything. And it's not what we originally approved. And that's what happened with this. We gave a time extension, they showed us something, and all of a sudden here, a year later, it's different, totally different again. And I think like other commissioners, I have a problem with that. So that's why I want to see everything in total. I just can't, you know, throw one thing out and then all of a sudden they might have something else better. I don't know. Let's see the whole thing.
Where are you going, Matt?
To be honest, I'm somewhat ambivalent, but I generally support it because this, this will serve as everybody on that side of the freeway, not just. We, we cannot, ladies and gentlemen, our, our job up here is not to design in a vacuum. We do need to consider the needs of the entire city. I am not saying.
I, I understand what you're saying. I'm kind of in the same boat.
So, so we, you know, with the conditionally used permit process, you know, we can, we can regulate the certain things to try and manage it, have the best we can. But it's irresponsible of us to, to design in a vacuum like that. There's, there's other things we can be doing. So.
I agree. We, we have to consider, certain parts of the city, we have to consider the whole city.
Right.
So.
This would service everything in Heritage Lakes, the lakes, Menifee Lakes, all that stuff out there. So we need to, we need to work very strategically with this project, work very smart and design it so that it has the least possible impact on those residents as possible. Ms. Sobeck?
Yes. One last comment. I'm just reminded of attending the Leadership Academy, Environmental Leadership Academy last week. There's three elements we need to look at. They tell us in planning. The three elements we need to look at that we always need to take into consideration is the economy, the community and how it affects them, and the environment. And those are the three things that we, as a commission, need to remember to look at in our, and when we make decisions. So I just wanted to share that with the commission.
Okay. There was a motion on the floor, if I'm not mistaken?
There was no second.
There was no.
What was the motion again? Or remake it, I guess?
To continue the item to December 10th.
I'll make a motion to continue the item to December 10th.
Can we make, as long as the developer's going to be here and has?
No, you cannot condition it in that fashion.
We, we can't condition him to show up.
If he doesn't show up, you can just continue it.
Again.
Okay.
If there's a motion, I'll, I'll second.
We have a motion to second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. All right. We'll move on to item 9.2, amendments to the municipal code as it pertains to the parks and land. Mr. Leclerc, you have a staff report?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, commissioners. The item for you tonight is a little bit easier than your previous one. You are aware that state law allows a city with development to require that that development contribute to the community via the establishment of parks, by donation of park land, or if, for reasons that the city feels are important, to submit fees in lieu of that. In addition to that, state law allows not, and that would be in association with the subdivision of land through a tract map or a parcel map. In addition to that, the state law will allow you to establish the dedication of park land and/or the in lieu payment of fees for development of residential property such as a, an apartment complex. Or if you've already got a tract that's been developed, that wasn't subject to Quimby fees, to apply those fees at that point of when residential development took place. What you have in front of you are two separate ordinances and two resolutions for each of those ordinances that will forward a recommendation to the city council to adopt two ordinances, two chapters of our code, of our new development code, that would allow for and set the parameters for calling for the amount of park land per thousand residents, the amount of land to be dedicated for parks, and in lieu fee payment or in lieu fee payment thereof. These are relatively straightforward. The city attorney's office has vetted this very clearly as far as their technicalities. We have broken it up into the two parts so that it's clear what is applicable to subdivision of land and what is applicable to residential development as standalone units. We recommend that you forward, make a positive recommendation and forward this to the council. At a future date, the council will establish what the fees would be that would be charged for the creation of park land or the in lieu pay of the fees. At the Parks, Recreation and Trails Commission meeting, as noted in the staff report, they also looked at this. They are recommending to the city council adoption of the two ordinances. In their review, something not subject to your review, however, it's important for you to know, they are also asking the council to look at the council's past decision about the creation of a master parks plan. Their recommendation was that the council at least reconsider the idea of creating a master parks plan. That's not part of your decision. Tonight, your decision is whether or not you believe that these two ordinances, the resolutions that would forward these ordinances are appropriate. Staff believes strongly that they are. We have the Parks and Recreation Director here to ask any tech, or to answer any technical questions that you may have. With that, again, staff's recommendation is that these are appropriate and advisable in order to forward a recommendation to have the council adopt these ordinances.
Thank you, Mr. Leclerc. This is a public hearing, so we will open the public hearing at, what is it, 8:15? And Madam Clerk, this was, will be published?
Yes, sir, it was.
Okay. And we have no applicant on this. Is there any public testimony on the other?
No, sir.
Okay. Then we will close that public hearing at 8:16. Questions from the commission towards Mr. Lennox?
I have some, maybe overall questions, which might help everyone. I guess I haven't, I don't understand the math on this as far as the current Quimby fee requires, the current Quimby Act requires three acres per thousand and there's a certain fee associated with that.
Correct.
Yeah, we're saying.
The, the current ordinance.
Current ordinance, I'm sorry. And now we're asked, we're being asked to change the formula, change it to this formula, which is, includes number of dwelling units times the number of persons per dwelling unit times .005 per thousand is the number of, you have these various formulas.
Sure.
Will, when we go through these formulas, will it end up with more revenue for the city? Is that the, the result of this?
No.
Because I, I haven't done the math on this.
No, it's.
Two things are happening.
Sorry.
You're establishing these, these formulas. We are changing from three unit, three acres per thousand to five acres per thousand. We are also, with the establishment of these formulas, breaking down that if you've got a development of 100 houses and the average number of individuals in those houses is 2.8.
Yeah.
So 100 times 2.8 is 280. 280 is what portion of 1,000? It's .28 percent of that, times five acres. That gives you roughly an acre and a half of land that would be the required park land for that 100 residential units. That's all that formula does.
So how is it done now? It's not done that way now, correct? Is, is it done that way now?
It's done that way now, except for the three.
So it's the same formula now, it's just you're increasing the.
Correct.
The requirement.
We put it in a, we put it in a hopefully easier language so that more individuals can understand it.
Mr. Lennox, you, you held over here tonight to, to do this. Is there anything you want to add with this?
Only that the consideration by the Park, Recreation and Trails Commission and the report to them included their effectively repealing what the, the city had already adopted at the time of incorporation, which essentially was the county's ordinance, and then increasing it to the five, which is currently within the general plan, the city's general plan. So this makes it official if it's approved and adopted by city council. So that way, when a developer does approach us, we have some, some teeth, so to speak.
And also the justification from going from three acres in the county, which is a low density, to five acres in the city, which has a higher density. You need more recreational opportunities in a higher-density location.
Okay. No, I'm for it. I just wanted to make sure I understood the math on it. That was all.
Correct me if I'm wrong, the Menifee Town Center project, that property, that park, was at three per thousand, was it not?
When that specific plan was created, yes.
Right. And that was at three per thousand, but we let them go with it. We were in the development agreement, we can make them do five, but we went with three because they were building the facilities that they're building? Is that, is that my, am I correct?
I don't know if we'd want to second guess why the council did what the council did.
Yeah. The, the proposed park within that development is actually outside of the calculation that you have here in front of you for consideration. That was actually conditioned as part of the development agreement amendment. So it is completely separate from what you're, you're looking at this evening.
Right. I, I guess I'm just trying to get my head around why that one was still at three when it was totally said and done. We had an opportunity to make it five at that point.
Yeah, I think there were some prior negotiations that, that took place and as I understand, staff and council had to consider what was already approved by the council prior to incorporation. That project had been on the books for a very long time, so.
And there was a whole package of changes and requirements, not just that one issue.
Yeah.
How would this, how would, how would this affect all the projects that are coming before us that have already been approved through Riverside County?
If you've already got a tract that has been approved, the tentative map or tentative parcel map approved, they would have already have had to have dealt with the county's requirements. A new map that would come before you after this is in effect would be subject to this ordinance.
Or if they come before us requesting extensions.
If, and if the state stops giving them automatic extensions and a tract actually comes to you for an extension, even then I think you would be hard pressed. You might deny the map for reasons, and I'm sure the attorney's getting nervous when I say that term, but there are circumstances under which you could deny a, a map from an, an extension for a map. Is there?
And encourage negotiation.
Yes.
Mr. Lennox?
Yeah, I've been here for, going on nine months and all of the park lands that have been dedicated that I've seen in these developments have followed the five per thousand. I think in congruence with the general plan, whether by ordinance or not, they've done it in good faith. Those developments have done it in good faith. So I can be corrected by planning staff, but that's what I've seen since I've been here.
And then one other issue is, my understanding is that in reading this and discussing this with Mr. Rosen, that the Parks, Trails Commission encouraged the city to create a master parks plan and that was denied because of cost considerations and other things, but part of this is.
You have the Parks and Rec and Trails Commission, that's their role, and they made a motion to recommend that the city council consider, reconsider its decision as to, to whether it wanted to proceed with the creation of that plan or not. That is not something on your ta, uh, plate. I do not recommend you make any comment to that issue.
And, and additionally, the original proposal to council to pursue a park master plan was done before the commission was even formed, uh, and council's decision was done, uh, before the commission was formed. Uh, in light of what, uh, Quimby and mitigation ordinances, um, entail for any city, um, it is the recommendation that staff's making to council, and that was seconded by the Parks and Recreation and Trails Commission, to reconsider pursuing a plan because it assists with, um, conditioning developers not only to dedicate land at a particular rate or a particular size, but also, uh, give them some parameters for what types of amenities go in each of those parks and so on. So there is more to it, but Charles is correct. It is not necessarily for consideration by this commission.
And was that recently made, that recommendation by the Parks Commission to the council?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions, concerns?
Yeah, I'd like to ask, um, going from the three acres per thousand to five acres per thousand, it talks about land or fees in lieu of, so in essence, say if, if a developer comes in and says, well, I've already planned for the three acres, and then instead of giving up two extra acres, is it possible now that they pay the fee for the other two acres and we still end up with three?
Correct. The city has the opportunity in review of that tract map. The city could say, no, three is unacceptable in the review of the map, and you have to, to redesign, reconfigure your tract map so that five acres are provided. Or the city may say, yes, you've got three parks that are within a thousand feet of your tract, and we would prefer no acres of park land and all fee so that we can improve those three parks that are within a thousand feet of that map.
And if we would, we would go ahead and approve this, we're still only talking, cause I'm trying to remember when we did the general plan, I'd say, what was it, like eighty percent of the land, developable land was pretty much already all spoken for, and so we're not really talking about that much land left in Menifee as far as developable, so...
You're talking, yes, twenty to twenty-five percent for subdivision. There are, um, maps and so forth, or residentially divided land that would be subject to the second part of this, the development of those residential units, um, that would be subject to a fee.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions or concerns? This is pretty straightforward. Uh, I'm, I'm generally in support here, so, uh, would anybody care to make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion that we pass on to the city council. Um, resolution number twenty fourteen dash one eighty-six. Do I need to do these separate, or can they go together?
It's, yes.
They're listed together on the agenda.
Okay.
Yes, you can do it together.
Okay. And number twenty fourteen dash one eighty-seven.
Second?
Voice vote, please.
Second.
Commissioner Phillips.
Aye.
Commissioner Sobek.
Aye.
Commissioner Thomas.
Aye.
Vice Chair Metelko.
Aye.
Chair Leesmeyer.
Aye.
Okay. Thank you for your work, Mr. Lennox, Marty. Appreciate it.
Yes, sir. Parks Commission.
We'll go on to our discussion items. Item ten point one, discuss and consider amending the Newport Hub specific plan. Mr. Leclerc?
At your last meeting, you asked that this be placed on the agenda so that you would have the opportunity to discuss amongst the commissioners whether or not you would want to ask the city council to affirm your initiation of a specific plan amendment for the Newport Hub specific plan. We are asking that you give us some guidance so that when we send this on to the city council to have them affirm your initiation. And why I'm asking that it would be affirmed for the initiation is because it's, there are some substantial resources that would have to be expended in order to accomplish a specific plan amendment. If an applicant were to submit, uh, on their own amendment, the initial charge would be just over sixteen thousand dollars. It's anticipated that that would be on the, on more than likely the mid-range of what it would cost the community, um, to do that. That's why that fee is established. Depending upon how much, how many changes you would suggest to the, uh, specific plan, the extent of those changes relative to the documents that we would have to change, the impact that would result, uh, on the environment, the environmental review associated with those changes, um, and how much explanation and consideration and new narrative that would be created to support that, those changes. Those would all affect how much it would cost the community if the, the city initiated that specific plan amendment. Staff does recognize that you have expressed concerns in the past for specific uses, and property owners have expressed concern for their limitations on uses. It is their property, however, and they have the opportunity to submit a request for a specific plan amendment which would address their concerns and probably many of your concerns. It is their land that, um, they've built on or they want to build on. It is their land that they want to, um, uh, have specific uses for, and it is their land that they would profit from, from those uses that would be allowed. So it's up to the commission as to whether or not you would like to initiate a specific plan amendment. If that is the course you would like to take, staff would need some kind of guidance from you as to what your issues would be so that we could include that in the information that goes up to the council for their confirmation and authorization to move forth with that.
Okay. Questions? Okay, I'll start. I'm, in light of the discussion there with the fees and, and such, I'm, I'm not inclined to go forward with asking for a specific plan amendment. Um, I, I think we can really, the commission can attack these projects one at a time as they come forward, um, as we've done so far. There, there were some concerns with some of the projects that were coming through, but, uh, last thing I want to do is, is, uh, give the perception of a gift of public funds. I mean, it's a lot of money and a lot of time that we're gonna be doing, spending time basically designing somebody's project for them, so. That's about all I have to say. Is anybody else have anything to add?
Well, I was wanting to push this, well, Lisa and I, but in light of the fees, I understand what you're saying. Um, I still would like to change it, but if the commission could understand the whys that we went through on the last project and the concerns, uh, it could have been much better addressed. Uh, we're losing opportunities here, uh, but I do not want to expend public funds like you mentioned. So that's just my comments on that, I guess.
Any other comments? All right. We'll move on to item eleven. Uh, Community Development Director comments. Mr. Leclerc, you have anything you want to add?
Um, no further comments for tonight.
Okay. Commissioner comments?
Yes.
Sobek?
Thank you. Um, I do want to put on record, just don't want anybody ever to think that I was the cause of somebody getting a felony. So I just want to make that clear. Okay? Um, also, um, I want to let the commissioners know that in our packet, we received a letter from J. N. Grease Services. He came before us, um, and talked about his, uh, grease service, uh, business that he has over on Sherman Road in Menifee. Um, it says here that he, that the lead enforce, the enforcement and permitting agency, uh, for processing waste meat scraps is the California Department of Food and Ag. Um, I thought, we, I don't know anything about this from Food and Ag, what, what this type of, uh, business can have on the neighbor, neighboring communities. So I actually, um, did, I contacted the CDFA and the rendering office today.
Excuse me.
And, um, they are willing to send out to us sometime next week. If we send them a copy of this letter, they have probably like a form letter that they'd be happy to send out of things that we should be aware of and just, um, if there's anything to be aware of when somebody wants to become a rendering office. And so I'd like to ask staff, um, cause I have notes all over mine, Jennifer, and I'd like to ask staff, maybe, um, I have the gentleman's email that he would like us to send a copy of this to, and then he'll provide us with the information that we may need to make a, a good decision when we get to the part of the EDC.
I would support that.
Okay. And then I would just like to congratulate Matt on his, uh, uh, appointment or election, winning of the election to the, uh, our, uh, city council, and say that we're, we're losing a good chair here, and, uh, so just wish you luck in that endeavor. So will, will he be doing double duty?
No, on December third, the council will certify the election and swear Matt in as a council member. His seat will remain vacant until, uh, the council chooses to fill the, the commissioner's seat.
Okay. All right.
So that means Mark's gonna be running things, right?
Yeah.
Menifee Town Center.
Whoever's the vice chair will run, automatically goes to running the meetings.
Okay. All right.
Well, congratulations on your new appointment then, yes.
And since we have a few of the community here, I'd just like to, um, let everyone be aware of that there is a community interfaith Thanksgiving service that will be happening Tuesday, November twenty-fifth at the United Church of Christ, and it's about unity and about gratitude. So every, it's, uh, the only cost is a non-perishable food item. So just let everybody be aware of that. And thank you, staff.
Thank you, Ms. Sobek. Any other commissioner comments?
My comment? Yeah, I'd like to publicly congratulate Matt Leesmeyer for winning the election. And if we can reconsider, we can move that back into January instead of December tenth. I'm kidding, I'm kidding. That's it for me.
All right.
Uh, I would like to, uh, on behalf of Commissioner Sobek and myself, we attended, uh, version three of the Environmental Leadership Academy that was held up at, uh, Twenty-Nine Palms at Joshua Tree National Park. It was a very enlightening session, uh, that was really punctuated by a tour of that, uh, national park. I strongly encourage anyone who has not been there to, uh, go pay that park a visit. There's a lot of unique features up there. Uh, I don't recommend any of the restaurants, so bring your own food. Uh, there's a lot of interesting things going on out in the, in that part of the county and that part of the state. And, uh, one of the things that I was impressed with was how many people are dedicated to the preservation and conservation of California's remote environments, particularly the desert, and the actions and reactions that are being, uh, taken and undertaken in order to preserve this resource that many of us, uh, either ignore or just take for granted. Um, I'd like to think that, uh, it was a very enlightening visit, and there was a lot of things, but one of the things that kind of stuck in my mind was the lack of young people that are concerned with environmental issues that confront this state. I do believe that we as city officials or teachers, parents should, um, step up and reemphasize the idea that the environment that, uh, was discovered hundred, two hundred years ago is still the benchmark for California's, uh, reputation and the perception that other people have of us. And so I, I just want to let everyone know that, um, that Environmental Leadership Academy is a really, really valuable thing for elected officials, uh, interested people to take advantage of. Thank you.
Comment?
Sure.
First of all, I want to congratulate Matt on his win. Um, again, I'll be sad that you're leaving the chair. I've been there. Mark, it isn't, it's not as easy it looks, trust me.
I know.
And, uh, there's a talent to running a meeting. Uh, I gotta say, you're much better at it than I was. You do a really good job balancing it. Um, most of the time we've agreed on decisions, sometimes we haven't, but you've handled it professionally, and I appreciate that. Uh, I think you'll do well on the council. Uh, on a more dark matter, um, I was, wish Katie Manier was here, she's not still here, is she?
Yeah, she leaves.
She leaves. Um, I've sat in many meetings listening to the things that she said, and thank goodness for the Constitution and the freedom of speech. We all have a right and we should express our freedom. However, we also need to be held accountable for the things that we say. You can't just spout something and expect it not to have an effect on people. So tonight I was about filled up with that. The comment she made about Lisa, uh, first of all, planning commissioners are not responsible for directing their councilman. So Katie is the queen of throwing mud, walking away and not caring where that mud lands. Uh, she does not back up half. She makes statements, and I can honestly say many of hers are not backed up by fact, and so she's a good mudslinger. So I'm very saddened that someone who speaks regularly at these commission meetings, uh, has tainted this process, and I am saddened by what she does. Um, her comments about Matt, um, I think were uncalled for. He's gone through the legal process. I'm happy to sit next to you. Um, and I'll say this, friend to friend, we've all done stupid things when we were young, and I am so glad that not everyone knows the skeletons in my closet. So, uh, I'm happy to have you sitting here. I hope you will make, uh, votes on a council that I would be proud of, and, um, and I hope Katie will research her comments and use a little more, um, civility and, and still communicating her wishes. Can I leave that?
I'd like to second that too, because I've known Matt for about eight or nine months, and I found him a very present and a professional person to work for. This is why I supported him, and, uh, I will continue, as I stated before, to support him. Um, it, it's very rare in the civilian community to find people of quality who want to devote time and energy, as well as their own expense, into doing this type of a job. And so I, I want to applaud him for that effort, and thank him for his service both before now and in the future.
Thank you all, appreciate it. Well, I wasn't really gonna address any of that, but, uh, you know, since you, since you talked about it, Chris, you know, I, I would like to apologize to the commission for, for Ms., Ms. Manier. I, it's, um, nothing I can control, obviously. Um, unfortunately, there are some people out there that want to judge a completely different person, an eighteen-year-old that made a very stupid mistake, and, uh, I, I'm here to assure the, the future council, the rest of Menifee, that the person that made that mistake when he was eighteen years old is not the same person sitting at this dais.
We've got kids now.
Yeah, right. Uh, so I thank you all for your comments. Thank you very much. Um, I have nothing more to add. If there's anything else anybody would like to add, we can take a motion adjourn.
Yeah, before I close, I do want to thank, um, everyone who came out tonight from the community to, to, uh, speak their right, speak those who wanted to speak and take their constitutional rights, and, uh, uh, thank you for being here.
And don't forget you're adjourning to a special meeting, uh, of Tuesday evening instead of Wednesday evening, the day before Thanksgiving.
I move to adjourn.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.